... Thank you. I guess we're competing against the barbecue, so I think we've lost. I'll adjourn the meeting. We'll go have a hamburger. Thanks for being here. First, I'd like to welcome Anita. And it's going to be the, or is, the RSIC representative. Welcome to the board. Just to remind folks, for purposes of taking out papers, we do have vacancies coming up. One is the RSIC, the Woolwich seat, the Bath seat, and the Pittsburgh seat on our Hall of Fame election in November. But welcome to Anita. Thanks for agreeing to join us. Just first, in terms of comments. I had the opportunity to address the faculty and the staff this morning. They met here at Woolwich. This was their first meeting for the year. Schools, Hattie State, for the kindergarten, from K-9, and then the high school kids. So we're right at the cusp of the education season, so to speak. But for those board members who've, and I know Alan and Jen, you probably have had the opportunity to pass to see the entire staff and faculty in one room. But it is, you know, the RSIC is a pretty large enterprise. I don't know how many, 200?
It goes to 300, ever again.
You know, staff and faculty, and everyone's enthusiastic and very excited about the beginning of the school year. And the other thing to note is that we have a regime change, I guess. I was vice chair, and I'm going to be taking over the responsibilities of the chair until January, when we will reorganize. And I'd ask that Lou Lenzel assume the responsibilities of vice chair, and he's agreed to do that. Okay. So the first item, 4.0, is approve and amend minutes of the June 26 meeting. We can take them individually if you want. We have minutes from the June 26 meeting. Hopefully, folks have had a chance to review any corrections or... What do you do first? June 26? The only thing I would add, and this is Alan on your behalf, on the comments related to the high school building project update, and there are a couple of sentences attributed to you, Alan, that talk generally about efficiency of the building and getting figures necessary for approval. And I think those comments were specific to the geothermal. Page number five, page five of the minutes. I think the discussion at that point was about geothermal options. Relationship to that presentation. To the geothermal. So I don't know if there's a way to amend those two sentences, or just amend perhaps the first sentence. However, the challenge has been getting the figures necessary to get... Necessary to...
Well, we want to make sure before we go to the public that what we're doing, we can justify.
But my question is, I think your comments were specific to the geothermal, not to the building in general.
No.
We weren't talking about the building in general. Is there any, can anyone suggest any...
What were the challenges we did to make sure to get approval regarding the cost of the geothermal?
Or just getting figures, getting figures related to the cost of the geothermal.
Yeah.
If we could make that change, I think that makes it a little bit more accurate. Okay. Right, Alan?
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so can we have a motion to approve the minutes of June 26 with that agenda? We have Lou. Second by Alan. Call in favor. Any opposed, no opposed? We have the minutes of the July 24 meeting.
Mr. Chair, could I ask for one small change?
Sure.
In the last paragraph there, I think it was for academic student services I was talking about? I just read the academic. Quite a good question. 50% should like the scenes for academic student services.
Okay. All right. Any other changes to those minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve as amended?
Some moved.
Motion by Jen, second by Lou. Call in favor. Opposed? No opposed. Item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. Patrick?
Just have one. We have overnight field trip approval for your consideration for the flow dates. So I think you have a hard copy on your table tonight. So I don't know if you want to put those, 9.2 or 9.2A.
Okay, why don't we make the flow request item 9.2A on your agenda? Any other changes or adjustments? So we have this item 6.0. This is our first public session, or public comment period, I should say. Why it says public session? Public comment period. And at this, there are two scheduled in the meeting. This is the one where we ask you to direct your comments at items that are on the table. Anyone in the public who should address the board at this point? Okay. Thank you. Committee reports, item 7.0. 7.1, the Morse High School Building Project.
Yeah, we're going to do a presentation with Ron Bar, who's our chief architect this evening. And I'll just quickly run through the dates. We go September 12th, we'll have a local straw poll vote at Bath Middle School, and that is to hopefully for the local people to show support for the budget of the new high school, for the interior design, as well as the timeline going forward. The very next day, on the 13th, we'll travel to Millinocket to make a presentation to the State Board of Education, to hopefully get their approval. And then whatever the date is with the referendum in November is when we will be going for a vote for the new high school. So we will be coming around, either myself, Ron, board members, Deb, to all of the communities, to the elected officials, and we'll probably have a couple meetings at Morse as well, open to the public, to go over the presentation that we're going to show this evening, and also once we have, you know, we just received some numbers from the state last week about their portion, and then our portion locally, to be able to explain to people what it would mean for $100,000 hole in each of our communities. So again, we'll do that before people vote in November. So I'll turn over to Ron.
Just before you do, could you just do maybe 30 seconds on what the process has been to date to bring us to this point? We started this a couple of years ago.
It's been a long process. We condensed our committees, sustainability, design, Ron helped me out there. So we have one building committee now of, if everybody's present, it's probably close to 25, 30 people. And it's a lot of community input. We've had numerous meetings. The site is at Wayne Farm. That took a little bit more time and effort than what we expected, and it's continuing to take time and effort, and it's going to be a fair amount of investment from the state for that site. So that's where we're at now. The building committee, people that could make it, we recently went up there, onto the Wayne Farm, to get an idea of where the, how the building's going to be situated, and how much land we have to work with. So we continue to move forward with it, and we're at a point now where even though, hopefully, the referendum will pass in November, that we still have time for input, especially from our own staff, to talk about how they want the design of the rooms, the spaces in the building, and so forth.
I'm texting a technology director.
He's here.
He's having a burger.
I think it's on the top of the projector. Great. Turn it on. I use that one now. Yeah, it's turning on. Right, it's very green.
So it should be BGA, right? One or two?
I think about so.
Right, if I had it?
Yeah.
So we've got these boards back here.
Maybe we start, did you start from here?
Uh, sure.
Supertricks.
That's always the first thing. Right. So once again, just going through, searching all the possible...
I'm sure this in no way reflects on Ron's oblivious architect.
It does reflect on my lifelong learning of technology.
I think Patrick went out to try to find Dean.
Near the very house.
There it goes. So we're, yeah, we're doing... I guess Dean went to see if he could find a cable to make the connection. So let's just move on. If we could go to 9.1, 9.0, new business, and 9.1, personal life. Patrick?
So under resignations, we had Michael Rice, who was a math teacher at BNS, and Emily Powers, who was grade one teacher at PBS. They both took jobs closer to home, but we like to vacuum for their years of service to the district. 9.1B, you have the scheduled B appointments with your backup, and I believe the majority of those are filled. We may have some in the spring dive for coaches, but that's an FYI for you.
Thank you. All right, we have 9.2, overnight field trip request, and this is an action item. The first request is... Bath Middle School. Spare each. Do I have a motion to approve the request? Okay, I'll second. Motion by Megan, second by Lou. Call in favor. Any opposed? And 9.2... 9.2A, which are the requests for flow, that we'll just put on the table tonight. Do I have a motion to approve those requests? Motion by Alan, second by Lou. Call in favor. Any opposed? No opposed. Let's do 9.3. We have the opportunity to appoint and delegate the main, the main state school board association annual assembly. I think you've done that in the past. How do we go on? Anybody else, anybody else is welcome, if not, I'd like a motion to appoint Alan as our representative to the delegate assembly. Some moved? Motion by Jen, second by Lou. Once again, second by Lou. Call in favor. Any opposed? Unopposed.
Why is that? Do you know what I do? Maybe end them off.
All right, let's go back to, I'll do a finance committee update, 7.2. On August 16th, we, well, we had a discussion on how to deal with the additional state subsidy that came to the district at the July meeting, and it was recommended or proposed that we go back to the finance committee with this issue, and we did meet on August 60. Oh, it's the 60th. I don't have to correct that. I think it was the 60th, but if not, it was the 14th. And we discussed the, we discussed the item, and it was the recommendation of the finance committee to return 50% of the additional state subsidy to the communities. And as typically, when we receive the additional state subsidy, it goes back to Bath and Woolwich because they are receiving districts. But the nature, particular nature of these funds, or the legislation that added these funds to the budget, enabled us to return those monies to all districts, all towns, communities within the district. So it is proposed that a distribution, the distribution of that 50% in certain amounts would be restored to each of the towns. And this is listed down under new businesses and action items, so at this point, I'm just giving the report to the finance committee. There was discussion at the finance committee, moving back, that 100% of the funds be retained by the district to be used for our building project. But again, it was the recommendation of the committee to return 50% to the communities and retain 50% for the high school building project. Again, that, we'll cover that in under new businesses and action. Should we keep going, guys?
Do you want the financial report?
Well, I'm trying to find out where they are. All right, we're in charge. Thanks, Steve. Go back and enjoy that.
Sorry, Oris. So my apologies. So I can talk loud, like your mic, or... Okay. We can, this will take forever, or it can be real quick. So whichever you prefer. I think if you sort of get the gist, just say, "We get it." So the first thing is... See, can everybody see that? So, I don't know if you can read this, but this is a letter that the RSIC wrote to the state, basically thanking the state for everything that they've done, and reevaluating, restating the importance of the school to the community, and what it's going to provide for the community in terms of facilities versus what you have today. This booklet is something that we sent to the state for concept design. So their process is, as Patrick mentioned, they're going to approve this, and it not only approves the money, but it approves the concept design. So we've worked on this for quite a long time with the educators, with the building committee, sustainability and design committee. And we started with the BRCTC mission and the Morse High School mission statement. So the first thing we do for the state is justify why the site. This is Wayne Farm. You're all familiar with Wayne Farm. The nice thing about Wayne Farm is it's a predeveloped site. It's already been cleared. Some of the blasting has already been done, but we're going to do more blasting. And Wayne Farm is next door to the middle school. So basically, when we're done, there will be a physical locking connection between the middle school and the high school. The other thing worth consideration was McMahon Field. Being right there, you'll notice that our project on the site plans, we're not building any new football field, any new football stadium, any track, things like that. So that was another big part of the discussion with the state as we went through site selection about eight months ago, after a year-long process. Again, the benefits are McMahon Field being shared also with the middle school. So the next thing we wanted to mention in our report is that we took into account the sustainability of the site. So you'll notice that in order to straight up the page, the goal from the school board and the committees that we work with is that we build this building to be the least in terms of operational costs. So how do we build it? Build it once, and then forever and a day, we're spending as little as we can on electricity, natural gas, propane, whatever the fuel is. And so the first thing we did was orient the school. Now, you'll notice it's not on a north-south axis. It's off of an east-west axis, and it's 45 degrees up. You've got to think about it from, the students come to school early in the morning, and they're out by 2 o'clock in the afternoon, right? So we want to maximize the amount of daylight we harvest from the south, as well as the daylight, the ambient daylight from the north. So for that reason, we worked very closely with the committee to figure out exactly how we're going to the school. And then we talked about tary drop-off, right here. We talked about bus drop-off, and we talked about the entrance into the site. Is everybody familiar with Ankle Road right now? The little asphalt strip of road there? So we are building a brand-new entrance at Ankle Road. So it's going to be a real, viable, wide... You see how steep it is now? We're knocking that down, so that we're going to have a safe entrance into the site. We're moving the crossing of Mill Bond. We're moving the crossing of Mill Pond. Right now, there's a little thin crossing at Mill Pond. Going to slide that over to the left, make it a lot wider. That allows us to bring the grades down and come up onto Wayne Farm at less of an incline. Once we get up that area, the parents will come across here and drop students off. The buses are separated. All of the staff will park along here. And then this will be visitor and student parking. All of these roadways are two-way roads. So you'll come in and you'll go out in the same direction.
Are you purchasing the building that's currently there in your property?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, that's great. Good question. So there's, actually, there's the building right there. So our road's on top of the building. And so as part of the purchase of land, the RSU and the state are purchasing that property. The other thing we're doing, you'll notice that property has a sizable garage associated with it. The state has agreed to cut that garage off, move the garage up onto the site, and have the school use that for facilities and maintenance. So that was sort of, they bought it already, so they're going to be able to move that. In the back, you'll notice that since we are leveling off that site to some extent, we do have space for a full-size soccer field and a practice multipurpose phys ed field. So those, the A and B there you see are fields that will be associated with the school. And those are the only fields that we built at the school. Any questions?
So the fields being built have to do with the taking the material that you used in the last?
Right. So as they blast out this material, they also have to fill. So what they're doing is blasting it down and building it up. And that's going to make it leveled. And then all of that will be used under the building, under the roadways, under the fields. Yep. And I'm sure they're still going to be exporting some off. Last, last of ground.
I just want to make sure, I want to encourage, you know, some of us have sat in on these meetings for two years. Alan and itself, it all goes into here. But other board members and Anita, I'm pretty sure this is really the first time you've seen this level of detail. So, you know, to the extent, this is your opportunity to ask some questions as well of Ron regarding the building and the site.
And I interrupt everybody all the time, so please, just yell them out when you got them. This crazy diagram we're looking at right here is what we call an educational planning diagram. Because this represents how the school wants to work. Not how it's going to look, or how it will be laid out, or organized, but how does it work? So when we met with the commissioning committees, all of the school-related committees and the educators, we talked about one front door. So right now, around Morris High School, you have many, many doors. Everybody's going to come in the front door. If you're coming to school, you're coming in the front door. If you're a visitor, somebody from the community wants to visit, somebody from outside the community wants to do some business at the school, they come through the front door. Same thing with basketball games on Friday night, or a Saturday, or a Thursday evening. Everybody comes through the front door. So there's no more separate entrances all the way around the school. When you come into that entrance, we talk about that main lobby representing RSU 1. So from that main lobby, it's going to represent Aralsick, Pittsburgh, Bath. It's going to, everybody is in that lobby. And so when we go from the lobby, you'll be able to go into the theater. From that lobby, you'll be able to go into the athletic center, which is the gymnasiums. And from there, you'll also go into the BRCTC programs as well as Morris High School programs. So basically, that lobby is sort of a community center, if you will. Then we talk about integration. So you know today that when you go into the school, Morris High School is sort of off to the right. BRCTC has its own entrance. There are some BRCTC program space in Morris High School, but everything's sort of disconnected. So as part of this process, we're taking advantage of a new high school. And we're saying, what are the commonalities between some of the BRCTC programs and the Morris High School programs? For instance, BRCTC has a pre-engineering and engineering graphics program. That goes hand-in-hand with physics. So as we walk through the building, you'll see that we're starting to pair some of those programs up so that students can benefit from both throughout the school year. They're also made aware of both throughout the school year. And then in the middle, you'll see that we have a common area. So all of the shared spaces within the building, such as your dining facilities, your library, we're turning them into learning commons and dining commons so that you don't have just one space that you're going to eat in, and that's it. And it doesn't become a triple threat so that it's always being booked and always being used. It's more of a learning center than just a dining room, if you will. When studies taking place, some kinds of study halls take place in a cafeteria like this, now that cafeteria will be part of the library. So in effect, all the study halls, all the downtime that students have in between subject matter, they're going to be able to be doing that in association with the library. So that was the theory behind that. And we can explain that to the state in this diagram. We also talk about how does one enter the building? And so we are going to create an environment where the front door is locked. As a visitor, you come and you knock on the door, you bring a doorbell, actually. And there's a video camera there, so we can see who you are. When we let you in, we're only unlocking that first set of doors. You've all been in the best of you before, two sets of doors. We're only unlocking that one set of doors. When you come in, you cannot get into the building without going into the administration area so that they can check out exactly who you are and what you're doing here. And then they'll let you into the school. So we talked about the safety and security of the building. We also talked about sharing resources. So all of the administration of BRCTC is going to join the administration for Morris High School. And they're going to share offices, conference rooms, mailboxes so that the faculty, when they come in, everybody's one educational community. It's no longer BRCTC over here and Morris High School over here. Any questions about any of that? Okay. So the next thing we did is we talked about how do we organize the building? And so rather than explain it on these sheets, I'm going to go to the budget, and then we'll get to the building a little later on. So how does this work, right? So we've done all this work, you've seen, you've come up with all these designs. And so how do you budget something like this? So the first thing the state did when we started this project in 2015 was they gave us a hint at what they were expecting to pay for this building. So because of the Wayne Farm taking the amount of time that it did, they got the state to understand that that was really the best solution for the community. And also, we had to draw a poll where the public came out unanimously, voted that Wayne Farm was the best location. We started what I would call budgeting the project. So as we do that, there's a construction estimate. That construction estimate is for building the building itself as well as all of the site costs. And so how the state is proportioning this is they've asked, and they tell us that there are some things they'll pay for, and there are some things that they won't pay for. So what we've done, and maybe it's easier if I just go through this summary quickly and then get to the plans, so you can see what they're paying for and what they're not paying for. But you can see that the construction cost alone is just over $58 million. The next thing is administrative costs and reserves. This has everything to do with what did we pay for the sites? Movable furniture and equipment, advertising, project reserves and project contingencies. So you'll notice that the project contingencies right now are almost $6 million. And I'll talk about why that is in a few minutes. And because we're only at the concept stage, we don't have bids from the builders. So this hasn't gone off to get actual bids from builders. This is just right now in the budgeting phase. But this is how the process works. So that contingency is not only covering 5% of construction, it's covering another 5% for design elements that they know will go into the building over the next few months. It's also a 5% contingency on furniture and equipment. And so those numbers are put in. And this is all a formula dictated by the state. And you'll see here, they call it the state piece of it, and then they call it local-only. So everything you see in this column is what the state has agreed to pay. Everything you see here in the middle column is everything that the RSU is either going to ask local communities to pay or fundraise. And so I can get into that in a few minutes as well. Fees and services, everything from permitting to soils, construction testing, to clerks and lawyers, commissioning. Somebody asked you a few minutes ago, what is commissioning? So when they put electrical systems and mechanical systems in the building, there's a lot of calibration that goes on, a lot of controls, everything's automated today. So the state requires that you hire a commissioning agent, and that is, in essence, an engineer who specializes in the calibration and controls of these systems to make sure the contractors are doing it right. And according to what the district wants in terms of operating the building. So when it's all said and done, the state, in looking at this project and working with us now for over two years, is going to pay $67 million for 86 to 89. That is a few million dollars over what they wanted to spend at the beginning of this project. But they understand a couple of things. They understand the timeline, they understand the construction environment right now. And they also understand that the site is costing a little bit more money. And that also includes the savings. Remember, they're not building a football stadium, they're not building a track, they're not building baseball fields and softball fields. So when it's all said and done, the state is paying $67 million. The local-only piece is $702 million. And I'll get into that in a little bit to explain how that breaks down. And the total overall cost is just under $75 million. Sticker shot, I know. And what we're going to do right now, if anybody has any questions about the summary, is I'll go through the plan, and we'll talk about what all that means. We also have, the board has actually how everything breaks down. So let me just get the plans. So you've seen the site plan, and we've talked about how the site works. So the first floor plan. As you commit the door, remember we talked about, you're going to be able to come through these doors after you ring the doorbell and see who you are. You're then going to come in this door right here. So in order to get into the building, you come in here, and then you have to come into this administrative space. And then they let you up into the building. You're okay. You know, maybe someone like me, they're going to say, "No, I don't want you in here." Or, and what you're going to see here is both, there's a front desk for Morris High School and a front desk for BRCTC. So if you're coming in for the BRCTC programs, you get help right there if you're coming in for Morris High School. Everything in this gray area is administration. And what you see here is the state is paying for all of that. So see how that's hatched right there? Where you see hatches in a few minutes is where what the state will not pay for. Okay? So all the administration space is getting paid by the state. We talked a little bit, as we went out to the communities last year, we talked a little bit about how we were negotiating with them over science labs, we were negotiating with them over educational space. They've agreed to pay for almost all of that stuff. So none of that is going to be locally funded. So the first thing that gets locally funded is IT support. What you see here in just that little gray area, and I apologize, I just feel like I keep having a clap there. But that's what the state would pay for a high school of this size. So you have 650 students, you have another 170 plus or minus BRCTC students. So Dean just came in, fixed the laptop. You can imagine in the summertime, when they're taking care of all the students' laptops from the MLTI program, them trying to do that in that small space. The other thing that the RSU wrestles with all year is devices sort of needing to get fixed, needing to get configured, rebooted, fixed up, yeah?
So we're rehousing the district IT support in the high school as opposed to housing it maybe at the central office, something like that?
Yes.
That's the idea?
Yep, that's the idea, exactly. And it's right
Which is, it's where it is, Matt. The IT support for the district is centralized in one building?
Right. Yep. So the location of that is right off the learning commons and right off the dining commons. So the idea to that, and that little, that's like a genius thought right there. So as the students come down, whether it's at the beginning of school, whether it's at lunchtime, whether it's after school, they can come right to the IT department, handing their laptop or their device, saying, "We need to get this fixed." They can borrow one in the meantime, and then they can get it fixed. So it's very convenient for the students, and it's very convenient for the IT. So the students don't have to walk around the world, kind of like what they do now at Morris High School, in the BRCTC area. So the next thing that the RSU has to do a little extra was the dining area. So with block schedules and waterfall schedules and all sorts of different types of schedules in high schools today, everybody's used to three or four lunches, right? They don't work. And the reason they don't work is the kids who go to first lunch will come back from lunch, and they'll have their normal education period. The kids who are in the last lunch will have their education period, and then they go off to lunch, and they come back. But it's always the guys in the middle, right? It's that second lunch period, or the third and the fourth, or the second and the third, if you have four lunch periods, where their day is completely messed up, if you will. And it's very disruptive, especially if you're trying to do testing, especially if you're trying to do evaluations. So many, many schools around the country are going to two lunch periods for exactly that reason. They have studies out there that prove the student outcomes are better when they don't have to start a subject, go to lunch, come back, finish what they were trying to, what they started. So for that reason, we've made the dining area a little bit bigger. And that's going to accommodate two lunches. Any questions about that? The third thing is a multifunctional room. So right in the heart of the building, as we come into the building, this is our main lobby space here. And in this room right here, we're going to do several different events. So BRCTC has that room 301, right now, that many of you may be familiar with. It's where they have companies come in, it's where they do sort of meetings with How do you want?
With district level meetings. Instead of the public half of the district board meeting.
Yeah. So the room is constantly being used by different groups. Everybody from ROTC, or National Guard, or GOM Services who come in, or businesses looking to recruit students, or student get-togethers, demonstrations, things like that. That room can also be used as an alumni room after hours when school's not in session. It can also be used as a multipurpose room as part of the learning commons because it's right there at five lobby. For whatever reason, the DOE doesn't pay for a room like that. So if you want to have a gathering room, for instance, they would say, "Do it in the cafeteria." You can imagine that that's not going to work, right? Because if you're having lunch, it's just not going to work. So it's only 1,200 square feet, and that is a multipurpose room.
How many people would fit in a room like that?
About 60. Maybe 50, between 50 and 50. The next thing that took place was, they don't build performing arts anymore. The state basically builds an assembly room like this. So you right now have the theater at Morris High School. We talked about creating a theater, very similar to the one that's there now, but much more functional. Newer technology, and we talked about the number of seats. So all of this hatch area right here is 600 square feet that they're requiring you to pay for locally. And then upstairs, you can take every minute, but there's also a balcony for the theater, similar to what you have now, and that also is not paid for by the state. What we have in the design are 500 seats, expandable to 700. And so throughout this process of design development, when we start really seeing what the numbers are, we're going to be able to either expand that theater, or it'll be there for the future to add into the seats later on. The other thing is that the state agreed to pay for all of the BRCTC space in the building. So there wasn't anything that we went to and asked to make larger, asked to do something different. We negotiated and worked with them throughout the course of the process so that everything the BRCTC teachers, and faculty and staff are looking for, they're able to get. the BRCTC teachers, faculty and staff are looking for, they're able to get. One small office here is the IEP office, the individual educational plans, those are for students. That coordinator right now is already in the building itself. So as much as it doesn't make sense that we have an office now, but they won't fund the new office, they've asked for you to pay for that office. So some of these things you can see begin to get a little nitpicky by the state, but it worked out pretty well. The other piece of this is the gym. So, right now, you're gonna get a full-blown competition gym that seats seven hundred people, and that the state is paying for. In addition to that, because you have the girls' gym now at Morse High School, in addition to that, we were talking about a second gym for PE, for wrestling, for chair, for all of those things that take place after school while competition play is taking place. And so after long negotiations, they basically agreed to pay for just about half. So they're gonna pay for half the gym, and they're asking the local community to pay for the other half. So we've gone ahead and shaded that in.
Will those be two separate rooms, or a person?
Well, so that's what we talked about, and one of the things that came up was graduation and large events, such as the alumni dinner and so forth. And so one of the things that was discussed was, we would actually have an operable wall that folds up, so that both those spaces could open up to one another when you wanted to have that big event. And since these bleachers are built in, we talked about being able to come in with seating in this area, sort of focus your attention that way. So you can imagine like there'd be an event taking place right here, and everybody would be around, such as graduation or something like that, if you had to look inside. The last thing on the first floor that they asked the district to pay for is a concession and ticket booth. So there are booster groups, things like that, that sell food, raise money for the school throughout the year, and we've combined a concession area and a ticket booth, so that they can sell tickets to performances and raise money in that way during the year. So the first floor itself lays out in such a way that you commit to the front door, that common area is right there in the middle of the building. So all of the students, no matter if you're a BRCTC student, or a Morse student, or educator or teacher, that's really a wide-open space in the middle of the building. And then you can go off to the right, BRCTC, you go off to the left, for Morse, you go up and through, BRCTC. From that many lobby space, you go into the gym, or you go into the theater here, in here. And so again, it's one big common space with all of your big program spaces attached to it. You can see that there's a door here, and a door right there, and then a door right there. And so after hours, and then we put a door here, and then there'd be a door over here, actually down there. So after hours, you close those four doors, and you can have that lobby wide open, open to the gym, open to the theater, open to the learning commons, which is basically a place for people to hang out, but you can't get into the school areas. What that also means is we can shut down the electrical systems and the mechanical systems in those areas when they're not used. So we're only turning on the electricity in the air for what we're using after hours or on weekends. So to that end, we then go upstairs, so this is a stair right here in the middle of the building. When we come upstairs, there's more BRCTC, and then the BRCTC is here. And this is really where the integration, so it hits home up here, where you have graphic arts next to health, and graphic art next to engineering arts, which is next to a CAD lab. They share printing room, they share storage, they're right across from the SCENE project room, which is science, technology, engineering, arts and math. There's a large open space in the middle that I'll talk about in a minute. Then there's your physics lab, all of your art spaces is down here, are down here. So all of these teachers and students, and then these are suspected in math classes, there's more science labs, chemistry would be on the second floor. So all of this area right here really becomes a stem of SCENE environment. And what this big space here in the middle is, physics, they're building robots, engineering's building 3D robotics projects, things like that, they can go out into this hall area and have this big space, which opens right up into a project room, so that they can do demonstrations, they can do experiments, and students from all of the classes can see all of the things that take place, all of the projects that the students are working on. And so that pretty much takes up the second floor. Right in the middle of the second floor, we have faculty, and that, those are three faculty rooms, or two faculty rooms for the entire faculty of the building. So not only are they right in the heart of the building on the second floor, but they have windows that overlook downstairs, and they're able to see everything going on. When you come up the stairs, there's a door here, and a door here, and then we lock these two rooms, and now that's your balcony, right next to the elevator, that overlooks, that looks into the theater, the Performing Arts Center. And so that piece right there was locally funded. Everything else throughout here, this is the other little piece that's locally funded, is sort of that demonstration space in the middle of all of this. And that's really the amount of extra space in the building that the DOE asked for the local district to pay for, local communities to pay for. The other things are, you know, these rooms that we're designing, the more glass you can have in the rooms, you can see the students, the students can see you, sort of eyes on everybody, we have some pictures there on that one board. But the amount of glass within the building, the types of materials, when you come in the building here, there's tile on the floor, long-lasting durable materials. Since you've built this building, and I know it hasn't been a long time ago, it's only been 2012, right? They sort of changed their program now. So if you want those types of materials, glass, more durable materials, they're looking for you to share some of those costs. So they have their standard right now, which is basically reduce the amount of upfront costs. We're looking at it from the point of view of, let's do something reasonable upfront, but then over time, you can wash these things with water, you have the educational connectivity that you're looking for, and it's a very low maintenance, easy maintenance building, or easily maintained building. So when we get to the third floor, again, we have health sciences, we have criminal justice, and then we have Morse High School programs taking place, and then we have some administrative space up on the upper floor as well, so we have a vice principal up there and conference room. And that pretty much fills out the plans of the building. Any questions? So the next thing we spent time on, so this is the inside of the building. So when we talked about visual connectivity, when you come into the building and you can see everything, students are gonna behave better, because they don't, they now understand I'm being watched from seventeen different directions. There's faculty watching, teachers are watching, other students are watching. As you can see that even on the upper floor, we would have a banner of glass, and then we talked about a little bit of artwork, and that's not what the state pays. The state has some money set aside for artwork on every one of their public projects, there's a percentage of art. This art, we're talking about student art, we can engage local artists, we can talk to people about what is gonna put, because this is the RSU lobby. And so the building committee, the design committee, the sustainability committee, talk about that RSU lobby reflecting every talent in the RSU. And so when you go in there, there'll be things to remind you, or on display of every member of the community. This is the learning commons, so again, this is the front door right over here, so you come in there, that's the multipurpose room, this is where you eat, if you will, and that's just a reflection of what that space would look like. These are the halls, this is the glass we're talking about. So one nice thing about doors, and you see it all the time, with lockdowns today, things like that, if you put a window in a door, you have to put some kind of shade, or some kind of device, that every time you open the door, it flops around, breaks. So what we're suggesting is every door would be solid, but they have side lights. So you'd still be able to see in the room, in today's world, teachers don't wanna be in an enclosed room that people can't see in and out, nodding to students. And so you have these side lights, so that during a lockdown, you pull the shade on the window, and it's a durable shade, and it doesn't have to deal with the door being opened and closed all the time. It also allows natural daylight from the rooms to be shared into the halls. And then we've got some larger doors, so this is that one area where green engineering is, this blue area back over here would be where the physics lab is. So you'd be able to open these doors, and have the students come right out into this area right here, and work on their projects, run their projects, demonstrate their projects, and sort of have a hand-in-hand large group session between multiple classes, where smaller classes aren't really wanting to do it. So one of the other things that we talked about in the building design is future room sharing, right? Because the way that Morse High School is now, you have a bunch of nooks and crannies, and every room is a little bit different. So the idea here is that all of the classrooms, all of the educational space, would be designed to support every single subject. Now that doesn't mean we're building them all science labs, I mean, the science labs would be unique, but all of the math classes, English classes, social studies classes, AP courses, history, so they'd all be a similar classroom that supports any one of those subject matters. And as we move on in life, and, you know, schools start to be multi-age, and it's all proficiency-based, you'd be able to be doing different activities in those rooms to support those activities as well. And so what we're demonstrating to the state is it's a purposeful reason why we wanted to design all these classrooms the same. And then the furniture themselves and how you use them will be uniquely different. That's what the building will look like. We talked at length about a couple of things. Number one is to give it a little bit of a nautical feel, being in the region that it's in. We also talked about the arch, or having an arch, sort of a reflection back to Morse High School. We also talked about the bridge. One of the things that came up during a lot of our meetings was, people said, you know, as they're coming into the RSU one area, when you see the bridge, you feel like you're home, right? So you travel, you're coming back, you see the bridge, you're home. And so we thought that if we took that concept and sort of built it into one piece, so all of this concrete material here would be reflective of the stone, it's on the existing Morse High School. The steel that's behind the glass would be reflective of the bridges, and that obviously accentuates the entranceway. The sails, as you come into Bath, and you see the sails, if you will, shipbuilders, are taking on those vertical boat shapes, would be bolted glass, so this is all brick. And then that's glass and fiberglass, and that's glass and fiberglass, and this is all C and U, concrete masonry units, they look like stone, they're polished, sort of like granite, if you will. And then there's a canopy, a sparrow canopy. So this canopy out here that you have, and I understand the roof blew off, that won't happen here. Always something, right? So the state won't pay for that either. Now, they've fully admitted that they have paid for these things in the past, but in today's marketplace and so forth, so we're gonna do that, obviously as something, you know, extra for the RSU to pay for. The one thing I didn't talk about is the geothermal system. So we're gonna do a couple of different alternates, so that the RSU and the board, they have an opportunity to make these decisions later on in life, and not just right now. One of which is this canopy, let's find out what it costs, let's find out how much the state will pay for it after we get those costs, and how much the district has to pay. The second thing is the geothermal system. The state will pay for fifty percent of it. So the nice thing about geothermal system is you get your air conditioning free. Without a geothermal system, they're gonna make the district pay one hundred percent of the cooling system within the building. So the reality is, you're probably paying a little bit more for half the geothermal system than for a cooling system, but then over time, and we've calculated this out to be about a thirteen-year, thirteen to fourteen-year payback, after that, basically you get free air conditioning, because it's paid for itself, and your fuel costs are also down. So, but you don't have to decide on that geothermal system until the bids come in, because we're gonna design it in such a way that if you connect a chiller and a boiler to the system, it works, and if you downsize the boiler, get rid of the chiller, and connect it to geothermal system, it works. So that's the beauty, all, everything inside the building would be the same in terms of maintenance and operations.
So when you say later, does that mean after the building's done, or...
Yep, so you can do it two ways. If the alternate comes in and everybody wants to do it, the monies are in the project to do it. That's what we, that's what I'm gonna talk about with the seven point two million means. If you decide we're not gonna do it, then you don't bond that amount, right? So how this works is, we're gonna spend the next year, 2018, doing a lot of site work, so you'll see people up on the site blasting through everything, and then in the spring of 2019, they're gonna start construction on the actual building itself. They won't go out to bond the project until the spring of 2019. So what that means is, we'll have bids in hand, you okay, Andrew?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, okay. So we'll have bids in hand, we'll know what the costs are, before we go out and get those, bottle the money through a bond set. So what that means is, if you decide we're not gonna do the geothermal, then you don't spend that money. If you decide we're not gonna build canopy, you don't spend that money. But the money's all in there, because you may decide, well, for that cost and for that payback, we absolutely want the geothermal, we absolutely want the canopy. Just like this, I mean, you know, it snows up here, so, you know, the canopy's gonna come in handy. You know, the next thing is, you may decide we want seven hundred seats. You may decide we, you know, want that glass. And so the way the state process works is, you have to put all that money in now, which they don't wanna have happen, and after the bond, after the vote passes in November, they never wanna add money in, they'd be happy to take it out. On the flip side of that, fundraising. So the RSU has engaged a group to go out and do some fundraising, and they're targeting about seven hundred thousand dollars in fundraising, that number's in the project. So once again, you know, if you raised seven hundred thousand dollars, and you wanted to spend it on enhancing the high school, you're able to do that without going back to the taxpayers, and without going back to the state and changing all of these numbers. And so the state process is, it's full transparency, they wanna make sure that everybody knows the state's paying this amount, local communities paying that amount, and even on the offshoot that you raised seven hundred thousand dollars, that's in there too. Do they have any questions about that? Okay.
So that is, just, I just wanna say, I think, you know, again, Ron didn't make up this by himself, I mean, we've had a pretty active committee project that has worked with Ron and his, and his team to come up with the nuts and bolts of what you see here. The additional local costs for the auditorium, for the PE gym, for the alumni room, we're quite high on the committee's priority in terms of, in terms of willingness to say, we should go to the voters, we should go to the communities, and add that into the project. I mean, I think, I think that we're very high on that prioritism. The reason we continue, although I think, I think the committee is committed to geothermal, I think we have, you know, there's members of the committee here, I don't wanna over- misrepresent this, but I think the committee is committed to geothermal. I think what we have pushed Ron and his team on is to get us some very hard numbers on what the payback is, what the cost, what's reliability of it is, even though there are geothermal systems in schools around the state, this is not, you know, this is not new science, but I think the committee is being cautious on this one, and we wanna make sure that we don't bring something to the public that isn't going to work in five years, or, or ten years, or whatever. So we want this included in the project in terms of the bond, we wanna go to the communities and say, geothermal is what, is what we wanna do, but we're hedging that against what Ron- but we're hedging that against what Ron will continue to provide us, which is the hard numbers on what kind of energy efficiency and energy savings we can see out of the system, what's the long-term reliability of the system. And there's an engineering question here too. I mean, to put this geothermal system in, you've gotta drill 30, 40 silos. We don't know how many.
Right, so we're probably gonna be drilling about 80 wells that are about 450 to 500 feet deep. It doesn't use groundwater. So it's more of an earth coupling system, which means you take refrigerated water, then you send it down into the ground, and during the summer, the ground is a heat sink, meaning it cools that water up. And during the winter, it warms that water up. And so, there's no groundwater involved, you're basically using the rock. So it's the heat and the coolness of the earth at 50 degrees. So what that means is, if you have an air conditioning system, I was looking around for some ductwork. You know what I mean? So if you're, if you have an air conditioning system, you have to chill that water down. So what a chiller does, is a chiller provides chilled water, and it sends out chilled water about 50 degrees. So the reason why your building will have air conditioning with no chilled water system is because when you send those refrigerated water down into the ground, it's coming back into the building at 50 degrees. So a chiller is all electricity, so you would, or you can do gas. Either way, that chiller is using a fuel to chill the water down to 50 degrees. With a geothermal system, it takes nothing. The same pumps that are pumping the water through the building are just, they're larger because they're sending it down into the wells and pulling it back up. So the incremental cost in electricity is that. I just, I wanted to make people know that it doesn't have anything to do with groundwater. So as the water table changes over time, as the geology changes over time, it doesn't affect the wells that you're putting in. So this is a very low-risk system that would be, that we're proposing. We have a geothermal engineer on the project, a mechanical engineer on the project. We have lots of folks who've been, who have a lot of experience in this. And as Steve said, we're still in the process of getting numbers from different schools around the state, from buildings around the state, to tell people exactly what is the electric bill, what is the fuel bill, with their geothermal systems, versus projects that have a chiller and boiler. And what we're learning is, it has a lot to do with how well the building is insulated. So, you know, it's very easy for me to say, you know, what are your electric bills, right? You tell them what your electric bills are. And then you find out that, okay, but they don't have the same type of envelope in terms of insulating the building and keeping the drafts out and things like that. So we're modeling through that and we're vetting the committee all of those numbers. So we've got numbers in from Hanover Academy that has a geothermal system. We have numbers in from Wells High School that has a chiller-boiler system. And we're doing the comparisons, so that people can see exactly what those numbers are.
But we wanna, we wanna advance it, and to do, we need to make that decision now. If at some later point, the engineering doesn't, you know, doesn't pan out, we'll redirect ourselves to a more traditional chiller-boiler system.
Yeah, we don't wanna be locked into any, because this is just a concept design, we don't wanna be locked into any, you know, we wanna have the RSU have the options going forward.
Are there board, board questions, what you see in this?
I mean, you made comments already, but was at one point, did we have a Morse, a specific Morse alumni trophy memorabilia room in the front lobby? And is that the common use area, or is there still a space dedicated just for alumni?
So, if we go back to this room, that room right there would be used by the alumni. So, there's a room right now that's in high school that's locked. That room would be this room. It would be used during the day by the high school, but it would be used at night by the alumni. All of this right here, you see all those glass walls there? That is all locked, displayed here. So the alumni, I understand they have storage rooms right now with their artifacts in there. They'd be able to put all those artifacts on display and have complete control of them, so that you'd be able to see the history of Morse High School in a very secure manner, right across from the alumni.
So just to clarify, because I hear you saying more, you're saying we have time. What's the real timeline for the HVAC system or the geothermal? What are we really looking at?
So we leave it in the budget, right? That is done, so we talked about putting the monies in there.
No, I understand that's in it, yeah.
So, we're gonna do it as a bill. And so, in the spring, let's say the winter of 2019, right, let's say February 2019 or March, we're gonna get the bids on us. So to give you an example, we finished concept design at Metro School of Technology in Rockland in, let's say, June of one year. Then the vote passed in November. So then we took from November to July to design a building, they have a smaller building than you. And we weren't working with the state. And so, we then went out to bid. So their bids came back, and geothermal system was $1.2 million. And so at that point, that's when that board had to decide, is it in? Or is it out? And they chose to put it in. And we've done the same sort of concept analysis with them. And they're part of Camden, the five-town school district, and they had the geothermal. And so they were able to say, this is not my money, you know, we save by having them.
Okay.
So, that's when you'll have to really decide it's in or it's out. The building, the whole thing will be designed. So either way, and then when we talk about when you can do it, so some of our clients have said, okay, you've got the numbers, we don't wanna spend that much, but now they have the time. So, 10 years from now, they can take the summer, drill all the wells, make the connection, shut the chiller off, sell it on eBay, I guess, and get rid of one or two of the boilers, you know what I mean? So, you know, it's sort of, we're trying to make future-proof it.
So you didn't do it.
Right, you still have to design in the inside of the building, it's completely designed to support.
Okay, thanks.
The immediacy is that it's currently in this budget. What we are bringing, what's proposed to go to the state and what we're gonna vote on today, it's in there.
Yeah.
And whether or not we actually pull the final trigger on that, we still have a little bit of time to see.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions? Any other questions? You are gonna, you are gonna see more presentation of this going forward, but...
Just out of curiosity, the orientation of the building, is it such that, as you have to mention, solar? Is it such that at some point in the future, you could actually put solar power, solar arrays up there? I mean, it's a big thing now in the state, our town has actually just started to do that. I assume one school is doing that.
Yes.
Very small costs.
Yep, so there's a couple of different things we did. The building is oriented, well, the building's actually oriented. So a couple of things, I don't know how your town is gonna do it. One way to do it is to put the portable tags on the roof. Some folks don't like to do that, because if you ever have to go up and maintain the roof, you gotta take the portable tags off, do the roof, put the portable tags back on. So another way to do it is random building panels themselves, on the face of the building. So we've got the building oriented, so you could do either. You can either put them on the building, or you can put them on the roof. A third way to do it, which I think might be the best way in this situation, is not every site has 30 or 40 feet of rock face. That's gonna, because we're drilling down to lower down this whole site. And so one of the nice things about your site is if you see this whole building back here, where they're doing the fields, this is all gonna be a rock face. And so one of the things that you've seen maybe folks do in the past is build the portable tags detached from the building. So you have an opportunity to either put it on the rock face, or put it on fencing, put it over parking areas, and now what you have is a solar array that you can continuously add on to as technology changes, monies become available. So it can get bigger and bigger until it's actually paying for 100% of your electricity, or even beyond that, net positive schools, where you're actually generating money for the school district. And so, in this particular case, you're gonna have it either way. You can put it on the front, you can put it on the roof, or there'll be spaces around the building to put it out in the fields.
So that's another option that obviously we don't have to be doing, and if you are provided the ability to do it, if we wanna go in that direction in the future.
Correct, and we're gonna wire the building in such a way that it's planned for that. So how you do that is you take panels that don't have a lot of load on them, and you prepare them for portable tags, so that if you ever do wanna put in those systems, you're energizing this entire 200 amp panel, then this entire 200 amp panel, then this one. So we break it up in such a way that you don't have to hire an electrician to come in and redo all the wiring in the panels, if you wanna add portable tags.
That's like a second system for powering the site, as opposed to putting electricity back onto the grid and then risking that.
You can do it either way. You can either have a battery, or you send it back to the grid.
The other, along the line of energy efficiency, I mean, the windows are designed in a way to minimize the time that teachers and students would need artificial light in those rooms. So, the alignment, and what Ron's tried to achieve here is to use as much natural light. I mean, it's not solar energy, obviously, but there are, there are energy efficiencies and opportunities built into this building that are...
So, should we say this in my... What Steve's pointing out is, this looks very vertical, right? You've got all these, the vertical brick and the vertical windows. But the reality is, you've got a ribbon window going right across the entire building. So all of the learning spaces behind there have high glass that's gonna allow daylighting in. The top of the glass is at 10 feet, and so it's perfect for light shelves that actually bounce daylighting back into the building. One of the things the sustainability ass, committee asks us to do, again, is reduce the amount of operational cost. And, as Steve said, you know, we do a lot of predictions, right? We're architects, we think we know what we're talking about. And so we give all this information. But there are programs out there that are sort of intuitive and prescriptive. So the New Building Institute in California, for the last 30 years, I know that sounds like a long time, but for 30 years, they've been building sustainable buildings and finding out what actually works. And so they came up with a program called Core Performance, and that program is now adopted by Efficiency Maine into their Main Advanced Buildings Program. And our firm did the first main advanced building public school just this year. And so we've entered your project, you submitted an application to have this building entered into that. What they do is, they give us a set of prescribed ways to reduce the building load by 35% at the minimum. And it's always gonna get better if you use the building the way it's intended. And so what that means is, you need to have so much daylighting come in to shut off the lights. You need to have pumps, you need to have motors, you need to have controls, so that we have like a variable frequency drive. You can have a motor that's either on or off. When it's off, it's zero, when it's on, it's 100% electricity. A variable frequency drive, you can have that operating at like 12%. So you're only drawing 12% of the electricity, because that's all you need, as opposed to those motors. So, Efficiency Maine's gonna make sure we have all of those descriptive measures. They're gonna make sure we have all of those controls and parts and pieces, and that's part of the project. So that's in these, that's in this cost right now. And then it gets really goofy, we have to have floors that reflect a certain amount of light, ceilings that reflect a certain amount of light, paint color that reflects a certain amount of light, because it all works, and it's an integrated design. And so that main advanced building is in there. And if we achieve the main advanced building, Efficiency Maine gives money back to the district. And the state has already confirmed in writing that we can keep that money. You can keep that money, that does not go back to the state.
Okay, any, does the board have any further, any questions? We are, we are going to, this is an action item in a very few minutes. And what we will be voting on is to advance the concept design to the state board. And the concept design does include the budget, and does include the $7.2 million number, which is what, you know, we're not voting on, we're not, we're not putting that before the voters with this vote. We are obligating ourselves in a way to go to the voters and remember we're 7.2 million. So, just so you're sure about that. And if there are no further questions, Ron, you pretty well done. No questions from the audience. Again, once, once we get beyond the state board approval, this will, this will come to each of your communities. We'll be, we'll be requesting time in front of your town council, your city council, to do, to make this presentation or abbreviated presentation, so that, and we'll be going out to the public generally to share this information. Okay, thank you. So hopefully we're gonna move quickly through, we're back on item 8.0, superintendent through.
Yeah, I'll be quick. Just would like to introduce Katie Joseph, who's our new assistant superintendent. And Katie comes from SAD 11 in Gardner, in the same role that she's in now. And prior to that, she was a middle-level principal in the Boston area. So, a lot of Katie were excited ahead of you. We have filled all of our professional positions, teaching positions. We have, actually, I'm sorry, we have one, one day a week, ELL, English as a Second Language position that we need to fill. Besides that, we have a few support staff to fill, but we've been excited about the quality of the applicants that we received this summer, and we continue to attract high quality in a competitive field. A lot of our staff, I won't bore you with the details, but a lot of our staff, from ed techs to teachers to administrators, all attended professional development training this summer on a variety of topics. And lastly, I'd just like to thank the building committee, we talk a lot about the group, but the amount of hours that people put into, that they put into this project, and it's only gonna continue, is, I'd just like to thank the community and the board members that have contributed their time and effort. I feel like it's been a good process to go through it, and also thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Patrick. 8.2, the financial report.
I'm just gonna talk right from here, okay?
No, no, that's not it.
I sent you two reports this month, one for June and one for July. And June is just to, to give you an update of how we actually ended up. Now, these figures haven't been audited, but it's pretty close. We have a balance of $192,000, which is 7% of the budget. So we spent pretty close to what our budget was. We need a little bit extra in revenue, because we had some state agency client federal monies that payment for tuitions on certain students that had come into the district. So I just also wanted to point out that during month of June, because as we look at these financial reports all the way through the year, it's like we have quite a bit of money left, but during the month of June, 19% of our budget is spent, because we basically accrue all our summer salaries and that type of thing. So it's a big, a big expense month. July, here we are in July, and we've spent 2.63%, which is right in line with basically all the the new salaries for July are just July for change contracts down. So that's limited, and that's in line with what we normally spend.
Thanks, thank you. Any questions? Ron, can you, would you mind just sticking around for five minutes to add a bit to that?
No, fine. Vote no, redesign. You're only going to Brexit, you're gonna need a pension.
Okay, so we're down under new business, we've already covered several of the items, and we're down to 9.4, which is a discussion and vote on the additional state subsidy. which is a discussion and vote on the additional state subsidy. And this is, this is an action item. We do have a draft motion, um, that, that has been written up, which, uh, that's what we, we make and then we can have discussion on it.
So I'm going to read the whole sheet, right?
Yeah.
No, no, it's on the corners. So the motion itself is a move that the vote entitled Vote Regarding Disposition of Additional State Subsidy The Adopted Form Presented to This Motion. And here's the detail. Uh, vote regarding disposition of additional state subsidy. Whereas Article 19 is approved at the May 30th, 2017 RSE Warren Budget Meeting and ratified at the June 13th, 2017 Budget Validation Referendum, authorizes the school board and the RSU to use all or part of any additional state subsidy received after approval of the state, of the school budget. Two, one, increase expenditures for school purposes and cost center categories approved by the school board. Two, increase the allocation of finances in a reserve fund approved by the school board and/or three, decrease the local cost sharing expectation as defined in Title 20A, Section 15671A, 1B for local property taxpayers for funding public education as approved by the school board. Whereas, as reported on the Maine Department of Education ED 279 Report for Funding Public Education dated July 18th, 2017, the RSU has received additional state subsidy in the amount of $511,986. Whereas pursuant to Public Law 2017, Chapter 284, Section, several Js in the five, and related guidance from the Maine Department of Education, the school board is authorized to use the additional state subsidy as authorized by said Article 19. Now, therefore, the school board of the RSU votes to allocate the additional state subsidy as follows. $255,993 to reduce the education tax assessment for the 2017-2018 fiscal year and to allocate the reduction per the priority notice received from the Maine Department of Education. And $255,993 to allocate funds to Morse BRCTC Building Project Reserve Fund.
We have a motion, we have a second. I'll second them on the second one now. Okay, discussion?
Could we have a break, do we have the breakdown of the, to allocate the reduction per the priority notice received per school, per town, excuse me?
And I agree, based, based on the, the $255,993 figure, RSIC would receive $7,833. The City of Bath would receive $144,943. Pittsburgh would receive $44,850. And Woolish would receive $58,366. Any discussion, as, as I indicated, I mean, it would be the financing, the recommendation that we adopt this motion as, as being accepted. If there's further discussion on it, this is the time to do it.
Well, I, I had proposed something different to this and I, and I want to support the majority board's decision on, on moving forward, and I will. I just wanted to clarify, you know, any question about that? It's when we started talking about this, I had wanted to know if we could use some of this money to help academic student services for this current year. Um, and there was a lot of discussion around that. I think that this, even though it's still a passion of mine, and I would hope to have that money directly help students this year. Um, through a lot of discussion and clients committing and board members, if there seems to be the majority understanding of what's provided here, that money goes towards a building project and half of it goes back to the towns. Um, I was always definitely for putting money towards the building project because I think in my personal life, I try to save if I have any expense coming up. So I think this is a good way of saving money for a project that we know it's going to be costing the local taxpayers. So I feel strongly in agreement with that. I, the other portion, I just wish that we had this unique moment where we have additional funding that could really meet some significant academic needs, um, for the, for the district right now. But it's the board's agreement and the majority, so I'm going to support this. But I just wanted to clarify why I had spoken out to support direct student academic funding.
Any other discussion, comment? If not, um, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion as, as written? And opposed? No, the motion passes. Okay, um, item 9.5, which is the vote to authorize the superintendent to submit a concept design and budget to the State Board of Education. And again, this is an action item. So what, you have it in your, you had it in your packet. So what will go to the state?
I'll second.
Do you have a motion by Alan, second by Lou, that we authorize the superintendent to submit the concept design and the budget? All in favor? Okay, all, any opposition? No, all in favor? Good. Thank you, Ron, and we, thank you very much. Your job is done.
Yeah, welcome.
Item 9.6, straw, uh, straw poll vote for concept design.
We really just put it on in to get the word out, but Rob Morris and our office will be getting this out. Social media, uh, will be bringing pamphlets around to the local businesses. So again, it would be BMS, 6 o'clock on September 12th, and Ron would be doing a, a similar presentation. And our hope would be that people would come, learn more about it, and kind of do what the board is doing tonight is give their support as the project goes forward, even though there are still some unanswered questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have our second public comment period? This is, if anything's on your mind, go ahead. If you just stand and introduce yourself.
Uh, my name is Mary Giasco, I'm city councillor in the City of Bath. And, um, I wanted to start by thanking you all for what you do. I know I had no idea what you do, so we thank you. I, I learned a lot today about this extra state money and, uh, I didn't really understand it from what was on the agenda. But what I, what I came to understand and what your vote was, I just wanted to say that I fully support that and I appreciate you trying to alleviate some of those tax burdens on people in the city. While I have children in the school system, I'd love to have every fringe benefit that they could possibly have. I, I understand that it's our charge, it's the councillor's, it's your charge of the school board to help keep that available. Uh, and I just want to lastly say that I'm so thrilled to see this new Morse building. I think the concepts are interesting. I was like, in a short time, um, and I, and to all the volunteers who have worked on that, I, I think it's exciting time.
Yep. Any other, uh, comments? No, if not. Item 11.0, next bit, uh, next meeting date, we are meeting September 25th at the Pittsburgh Schools in Rockland. We'll take a motion for adjournment. Uh, the board does have a scheduled work session after adjournment. We'll move out public. If anyone wants to stay, we're going to, uh, have our, our initial discussion of board goals for 2017. 89 seconds, hand loads, 116, 122 minutes. Certainly, uh, anyone who wants to stay with the back work session, uh, is, published is free to do so. Otherwise, I want my motion for adjournment. So, now, second. All in favor? Any opposed? And it's adjourned, thank you very much.